Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is the January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Carrboro Town Council. And I'm happy to see everyone here on what is National Day of Racial Healing, which appropriately, we are going to be spending some time this evening hearing from our staff about the work that they have been doing on our racial equity goals. So looking forward to that. We're going to start out as we normally do by hearing from our poet laureate, Liza Wolf Francis. Welcome, Liza.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back. I wanted to just say that I am sorry to miss some of the meetings tonight because it sounds like it's going to be really interesting. And I have another poetry thing that happens some of my Tuesdays. So I also wanted to say that I'm going to be bringing in some community members and people who want to read poetry. So if I don't show up one day and they're here, I'll tell them to write their name on the list and say "poetry" so that they know. So because of the day and because of yesterday, I wanted to bring a poem thinking about racial equality, racial equity. And I wanted to honor Dr. King and recognize also that I'm a white woman and I'm reading a poem by Lauren K. Aline. And I just want to read a little bit about her. She is the author of "Difficult Fruit" and the forthcoming collection Honeyfish, the Assistant Director of the Furious Flower Poetry Center and an Assistant Professor of English at James Madison. And she wrote a poem called "Martin Luther King Jr. Mourns Trayvon Martin." And I wanted to share this poem because of the day and also just because I think we're still, you know, obviously as a nation and world in the struggle for racial justice and for racial equality. And I think that all of us need to be concerned about that. And she is very eloquent. But I want to give her full credit for this beautiful poem and to center us in the town and this journey is an important thing. Martin Luther King Jr. Mourns Trayvon Martin. "For you, son, I dreamed a childhood unburdened by hate, a boyhood of adventure, skinned knees and hoops, first loves and small rebellions. I dreamed you whole and growing into your own manhood, writing its definitions with your daily being. I dreamed you alive, living. For you, America's African heir, I dreamed a future of open doors, of opportunity without oppression, of affirmative and action. I dreamed Oprah and Obama. I dreamed Colin and Condoleezza. I dreamed doctors and dancers, lawyers and linebackers, models, musicians, mechanics, preachers and professors and police, authors, activists, astronauts, astronauts even, all black as Jesuses. I dreamed you dapper, the black skin of you polished to glow, your curls, your kinks, your locks, your bald, your wild, your freshly barbered, all beautiful. I dreamed you wearing whatever the hell you want and not dying for it. For you, brother, I dreamed a world softened by love, free from the fear that makes two early ancestors of our men, turns our boys into targets, headlines and ghosts. I had a dream that my children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin but by the content of their character. Sweet song of my sorrow, sweet dream deferred. For you, gone one, I dreamed justice, her scales tipped away from your extinction, her eyes and arms unbound and open to you at last." Thank you.
Thank you, Liza.
You get a hand clap for praise for that.
Thanks very much, Liza. Before we move on, I wanted to just check with the town clerk about the livestream and make sure that we're good with that. I've got an indication from somebody that the YouTube stream does not seem to be working.
YouTube streams should be working now if they would refresh their... I'm watching it, so it is working, but the Granicus stream is not.
Okay, so the Granicus stream is not working, but the YouTube stream should be working now?
Correct, yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, Mr. Clerk, you can move on to the announcement of upcoming meetings.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I have a few meeting announcements here. I have a couple cancellations, so I'll go over those two. First one was the Board of Adjustment meeting scheduled for tomorrow, January eighteenth. It has been canceled. Affordable Housing Advisory Commission, January eighteenth, tomorrow, January eighteenth, at seven PM at Town Hall. The Climate Action Team meeting will meet January nineteenth at seven PM. This is a virtual meeting. The Planning Board meeting scheduled for January nineteenth at seven thirty has been canceled. Also, the Transportation Advisory Board meeting for January nineteenth has also been canceled. And then we have, on Saturday, January twenty-first, we'll have the council retreat at the Rizzo Center beginning at eight thirty AM. And then next week, we have a Racial Equity Commission meeting on January twenty-fifth at six PM, and that's at the Bim Street facility.
Great. Any other town meetings coming up that we need to know about, folks? Elisa?
Yeah, just very quick. I will be hosting with a couple of other folks a community gathering here on the twenty-ninth from two to five. Primarily, we're going to be talking about how do we include Latinx folks in Carrboro as we move into advocacy and the elections of this year. So anyone who wants to come, feel free.
Thank you, Elisa. All right. Mr. Clerk, I don't believe we had anybody signed up for public comment tonight. Let me check in the audience to make sure that's still true. Just some eager observers from our local graduate programs at UNC. Welcome. Glad to have you here tonight. Oh, wait, including a neighbor. Oh, hello. Good to see you. Okay, so we'll skip on over to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. The first item is adoption of the two thousand and twenty-three Town Council meeting calendar. The purpose of this agenda item is for the Town Council to adopt the two thousand and twenty-three Council meeting calendar. And the second item is appointment of Chief Chris Atack to the Orange County School Safety Task Force. And the purpose of this item is to request that the Town Council appoint Chief Atack to serve on the Orange County School Safety Task Force.
Thank you. And I think we had a couple of updates based on council members' questions in the last meeting on those two items.
Number one.
Sammy's asked that we pull number one. Is there a motion to approve item number two on the consent agenda?
No, moved.
I'm going to pull two.
Oh.
I'll second it. Sorry for that.
Wait, what are we doing?
We're pulling both.
So it sounds like we're pulling both items.
Okay, cool.
Why don't we begin with item number one, Sammy?
Yeah, I just want to express gratitude for folks' willingness to have time to look at what I requested of our town clerk in terms of information about work sessions. And I appreciate the responses that I got. That was really helpful. I totally agree. Work sessions are an essential part that we should do more of. Just wanted to make sure that as we do six, I believe, proposed work session meetings, we actually have, in the previous agenda item, it was described that we would cancel meetings that didn't have a work session agenda. So my interest is to not reduce the number of meetings that we may need to do our work. In other words, you know, put a lot of pressure on consent agenda or during meetings having a lot of agenda items. And that was my interest. I'm willing to approve this calendar as long as there's an understanding that if we have the work, could include items for work session with regular items or no work session items and just do a regular meeting. But what I don't want to happen is if there's no work session that we cancel six meetings because that's a significant number of meetings that we typically need to do our work.
Great. Thank you, Sammy. And I think the clerk pulled a footnote out of the previous version of the calendar that had specified what one of your issues was. And so that would no longer be an automatic kind of thing to happen.
Yeah, okay, great.
I think certainly the case, Mr. Manager, that if we have business to attend to, the council will meet it along its regular schedule to take care of that business. Barbara?
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sammy. So I'm in favor of approving it as is, just realizing that it's our calendar and we can kind of make whatever changes we need to make to it, depending on, you know, if we have work. My question was, so... Two... Wait a minute. We're not meeting on April the eleventh? So my question is, what is the town... I don't remember. What is the town's observance of Easter? Some people are on Good Friday and Easter Monday. Some, I think, mainly do Good Friday. And so I'm thinking about us not meeting on Tuesday and the holiday being on Friday. Is staff working on Monday? Is staff off Friday and Monday? I guess is my question. Because if staff is working Monday, why would we not meet that Tuesday? Am I missing something? I mean, that's... Yeah, because I'm also looking at Juneteenth, which falls on June nineteenth. Okay, so the twentieth is a council meeting. So I mean, that would be another occurrence. So I'm just trying to figure all that out. Wesley, is that you?
Yeah, from last week, that was a recommendation, I believe, from Councilmember Romaine.
I remember. But I'm saying, are we open on Monday?
Yes.
Easter Monday, okay.
Yeah, we're closed on the Friday, the Good Friday. That's correct, yeah.
Is the issue... Thanks for raising that question, Barbara. Is the issue that maybe Susan, I think, that raised last week was because staff is off the Friday, they therefore wouldn't have their normal time to prep our agenda materials for the following Tuesday?
Is that where Susan?
That's what I was thinking, but also adding to that was that I'm guessing with that Friday being a holiday and knowing not everybody observes Sunday, but there will be a lot of staff that may be away for part of that week. I just wondered if by not having a meeting on Tuesday, it makes that what will be, you know, a three-day weekend, possibly more.
Because of the prep.
Because of the prep. And also just the consistency. I didn't know that. I didn't think about that in terms of Juneteenth.
I don't think it's the same setup.
But I was thinking in terms of when we have had Monday holidays, I think typically there's no council meeting on Tuesday. I think kind of we're in that spirit of not having council meetings hanging over everybody's head.
Sometimes, yeah.
Sometimes, but not all the time.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. I actually had forgotten what the rationale was, and that makes perfect sense because the prep is done, you know, like that Friday. So thank you for that, Mayor Proton Romaine. So I see also that we have examples here about what other municipalities do as far as meetings. And I know I talked to Mr. White about that earlier today. And I know we pretty much have meetings scheduled like every Tuesday. And I guess it goes back to just if we actually have work to discuss in any given month. And we can't see that far ahead to be able to tell all that, so.
Perhaps one thing that we could do, Mr. Clerk and Mr. Manager...
Thank you, Mayor.
We occasionally... Thank you, Barbara. Previously, the clerk will send out maybe quarterly or something kind of what the schedule of agenda items is. It might be helpful to do that again since it's been a while since we saw that. That's given us a sense of like what we know is coming. And as Barbara said, and as Sammy, of course, has stressed, it's one of his interests is just being sure that we're, you know, not closing down options to have meetings when there's business to be taken care of. And I think that's the main priority. All right, so can I have a motion to approve the item?
No, moved.
Second, Danny. Moved by Elisa R., seconded by Danny, that we approve item number one on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to item number two. I believe that was Susan.
Yes, just a quick comment. Mr. Manager, I appreciate the information you sent about the appointments from the Chapel Hill Carrboro City School District to the Orange County Schools Public... What is it? Safety Task Force? And so what this means is, I gather, what it means is nobody from Carrboro's Community Safety Task Force will be represented on the school board, on the school safety task force. And I just wanted to, you know, say that was, you know, it's unfortunate. It's happened. It's unfortunate. I know that the School Safety Task Force will be making recommendations to the Orange County Board of Commissioners. And so I hope that at least our community safety task force can be folded into this process. They have a chance to review those recommendations, sort of weigh in on those recommendations because it would be really nice to somehow get their input in this process as well. So I just wanted to suggest that.
Thank you. We'll watch for the recommendations coming from the county and share those with our Community Safety Task Force when they do come forward.
That would be just great. And also, I want to thank Chief Atack for stepping up and serving on the School Safety Task Force. There you go.
And I'll just add as well that when this agenda item first appeared before us last week, Sammy did share the information with our Community Safety Task Force so that they knew it was going on. So we can just be sure to remind them again as this moves forward that this is another opportunity for them to participate in kind of countywide issues of interest to them. Thank you, Richard.
And just to your point, Susan, that there are some residents accepted for Chapel Hill Carrboro City School District. So in theory, members of our task force could apply and be considered, probably a large pool. But they don't specify that it has to be a parent of a child or anything that says resident.
I thought those appointments said...
They've already made the appointment. We learned since the last meeting, they already made the appointments.
Oh, they have?
They made them back in December, yes.
Oh, okay, got it.
That was the kind of thing we weren't aware of last time is they'd actually made these appointments already, apparently, so.
Okay, thanks.
They were kind of waiting on the towns to do our part, so. Okay, is there a motion to approve this item?
No, moved.
Second, moved by Sammy, seconded by Randy. I mean, sorry, Randy. Going down the line. Moved by Sammy, seconded by Susan, that we approve item number two on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The matter passes unanimously. Great. All right, we'll move on now to other matters. Actually, before we do that, I'm sorry to bring this up again. Mr. Clerk, can you confirm that there is audio in the YouTube feed?
It is... It looks like there is not audio in the YouTube.
So that's an issue.
They can almost see it.
Confirmed by a couple people.
Okay, so if we can... I hate for us to... I mean, can we maybe see if I can get that fixed before we move on to the next item? Is that okay with everyone? Because I think people are tuning in to hear this update.
Can I call for a recess?
A star, Anita, so get ready for your moment in this. So why don't we just... Can we see what the status is before we move on?
We're on record-setting time.
Oh, we're still on hot mics here, so.
Do we call for a recess?
Not on YouTube, though.
Not on YouTube. Actually, why don't we take a, you know, two- or three-minute recess? Okay, all right. And hopefully turn off the mics.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
Okay, we're back, at least in the room we're back. And on screen, we're back, but not quite in people's earbuds or speakers. But the meeting is being recorded as usual, y'all, and it will get uploaded when it's ready. Okay, thanks, Mr. Clark, for looking into that. So we're going to go on to other matters, Mr. Manager.
Hey, the item on the other matters is an update on the town race and equity initiatives. The purpose of this agenda item is to provide an update on town race and equity initiatives. And our Chief Race and Equity Officer, Anita Jones McNair, will make the presentation.
Welcome, Anita.
So good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm certainly pleased to be with you this evening on this day of national racial healing. And certainly appreciate you all acknowledging this day by a town proclamation. It's also a special day for me because this is my first day in front of you in a single role since for the past four years. And so, full-time Chief Race and Equity Officer, so that's real special. Thank you. And before I get started, I do want to thank Mayor Siles for his inspirational words at the MLK banquet. I was very inspired. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anita?
So why don't we get started? I had a daunting task, and I think you all do as well. But what I attempted to try to do is provide for you in your agenda packet the last four years in a comprehensive review since joining GARE in October of 2018. And so, you've got all of that information. And my presentation is set up in such a way to talk about the guidance model that we use to move that work forward during this past four years. And also using a lot of those examples as examples so you can see how it really folds into the steps that we were using. I'm here to answer questions. And also, hopefully, after the council talks about how to move forward, we'll accept that update. And I do have a couple of requests moving forward. So hopefully, I'm hoping this information will kind of serve as a grounding for your upcoming retreat. And also a vision for our transformational type of work that we're doing. And also, I really attempted to garner all of the work that we've done in the past four years. But if you are aware of something that I did not put in that, those documents, please let me know because it's a work in progress, and I want to make sure that we document that. And hopefully, I talked with Catherine earlier today. Maybe we can somehow roll that out to the community and maybe even have it on a website. So that's just a little sidebar. So let me go on and get started. I don't know if you all are familiar with the National Effective Practice. I did mention it some years ago. But our work has been grounded by the National Effective Practice. This is something that, a resource that we received from GARE. And it's this opportunity to visualize the work, normalize the work, organize, and then operationalize the work. Operationalize the work, yes. And so, that's the steps we've been using for the past four years. Certainly, this opportunity to look at the direction that you want to go as a municipality or some kind of nonprofit agency. Then you want to begin to normalize that work. And we're talking about laying that foundation and that grounding for that work. Because we do know everybody is not starting at the same equal footing. So it's so important that you lay that foundation first. And so that you can also sustain the work. And so you can do that in many different ways. And then after you get that grounding, then you move on to organizing the work. Taking, looking at that vision and developing those partnerships, new partnerships, strengthening those partnerships, and working internally to see how that's going to work. Beginning to look at reports and things that you may need to get the work done. And then you begin to operationalize the work. You take those racial equity tools that you have in place. You take the action that you need to to move your organizations forward. You track data. You use that data to drive the outcomes that you're seeking. And so, those are the steps that we've used throughout the four years. And I want to take a look at how that could actually look for us. Now, let me just say that everything in your agenda packet can fall under one of these steps. But I attempted to try to take some of those examples because I was quite happy about the list. It's very extensive, and so I didn't put them all on here. But just want to kind of give you an example of what we're talking about as we move forward. So when we talk about visualizing the work, I want to go back to when the core team started participating in the North Carolina cohort. We had an opportunity to take some time to really develop this vision of Fort Carrboro. And we were also able to develop a branding logo, something that we could use moving forward. And so when I think about the work that we've done and how to visualize that work, I think about the racial equity vision statement that we have in place. And I would like to read that vision statement because it's so impactful in the work that we've done and that we do. And you can, as I read through it, you're going to hear the little nuggets that's very important that we've had throughout these years. So, "The town of Carrboro envisions being a community where race does not determine outcomes and all have equitable opportunities and resources. We envision a time when participation in community events, programs, and advisory boards represent community demographics. All will feel safe, secure, and know their work, their voice, excuse me, is valued. We strive to be an inclusive and open-minded organization that has a culture created by its diverse staff, which serves the public through a social racial justice lens." And so, this has been some of the guiding force of the work that we've been doing. During that time, around 2018, we were listening a lot to what the council had to say, what the community was saying, and these are the things that we kept hearing. So this guided the work. This is how we visualize the work moving forward. And so when we take a look at beginning that normalizing stage, as I mentioned, the North Carolina Learning Cohort, we were able to participate in the very first North Carolina cohort. It was about a year where core team members were able to train and work together. It was just a wonderful opportunity for all of us. We're laying that foundation, grounding the work. And we also, if you recall, we provided training for all of our staff members. We provided training for our elected officials. We provided training for our boards and commissions. And we've also provided training for some of our other stakeholders. As a matter of fact, all of our town employees are participating in a training session this month, decision-making for racial equity. We've had two sessions already, and our third one is the 31st of this month. So we continue to lay that foundation and grounding because we know it's very important that we all try to get to one place. As I mentioned, we all have not started at the same point. We do know some people are very anxious to get the work done. We know some people are very apprehensive about the work. And we also know some people, they don't believe the work is necessary. So it's really an opportunity for us to try to join forces and figure out where we actually need to land. We have a lot of can-we-talk sessions. That opportunity to continue to ground and develop that comfort feeling for our employees, that feeling of belonging. We debrief podcasts. We're finishing up our podcast on tomorrow, our 14th series podcast, Sing White. And John Hartman Brown has led that, facilitated that podcast series for the past 14 weeks. It has been phenomenal, the work and just listening. And I think the growth, I think we've all learned something from those opportunities because it was quite a wide variety of what, you know, the podcasts included. And so then we would again talk about it and what that meant for us. And what does that mean for us as a group? And so we continue to do those particular situations. We have a book club, and we have many different things going on. And then also, we've had two employee surveys. We plan to survey our employees every two years. It at least sets at the stage of where we are and potentially where we need to be. So this is the year. I reached out to her yesterday. It's time! And so we will have that third opportunity to take a look at, you know, our employees. And, you know, we have a lot of new employees, so there will be this opportunity to just kind of see where they are. But I've got to tell you, they have hit the ground running. We now have a self-paced foundational training class that they come in immediately, participate in that class, and all of them should still be able to go through that last training class on the 31st. So we're real happy about that. So that's that normalizing of the work. Now we, then we moved on to organizing the work. And I think we did that so well. Town staff organized the development of a core team. It's that leadership team within our organization, and we also work outside the organization. Again, that grounding of the work. During the time of the pandemic, you know, we were participating in the North Carolina cohort. And a lot of the theory we had to immediately put into action. And one of those items that I found that I left off the list, that will go on the list, is this second item, the food distribution during the pandemic. We were organizing the work that we needed to do for our community. Very important. And then, of course, during that time, we established a racial equity commission. You established a community safety task force. Economic Development hosted some BIPOC business roundtables to just see how we can organize and help our BIPOC businesses. And then, of course, the adoption of the One Orange Racial Equity Framework. So we're organizing ourselves. And don't forget, everything on that list can either fall under normalizing, organizing, operationalizing, or even visualizing. So remember that, and that's quite an extensive list. And then we move on to operationalizing the work, taking the action. And this was, this next item is one that I left off the list as well, and I'm going to put it on the list. "When the town council selected the quotes displayed along the parking, excuse me, the parks walking trail." People may feel, huh, what's the big deal on that? Well, it was a very big deal because there were quite a few very troubling conversations in terms of what to do and where to go. We had some of our community members that felt, you know, Dr. King has a lot of quotes. He has many quotes. And a lot of the quotes are nice and warm and fuzzy. And that's pretty much what was brought to you all to make the decision. And for those of you that were on the council or for those of you that were probably in the community at that time, you all had to make a conscious choice to say, I'm sorry, you got to go back and give us something that has a little more meat to the bones. You know, because that's not where, that's not who we are. We have to be very authentic and true to what's happening. And so, there was, you know, a lot of very hard discussions about this work. But we now have very necessary quotes around that trail. There's nine plaques and very good conversation to even get to that point. And so that's why that's on the list. It wasn't something that was just very easy in terms of making that decision. Your resolution supporting reparations for Black Carrboro, another, I'm sure, difficult decision for the work that we have to do. And now, town departments are going through that very same thing in terms of using the racial equity assessment lens. They're having to evaluate their policies, practices, procedures, and services using this lens. And maybe some unintended consequences. But nevertheless, you know, we have to take a look at what's actually happening and what's going on in our communities to see if the work that we're doing is equitable. And so these are the hard take-action points that's very important in the work. Now, it's not to say, okay, we're going to always stay in the operational stage because we're not. We can continue to normalize. We can continue to organize and operationalize. So as you can see, it's an ongoing cycle. And so, again, this doesn't even touch the surface of that list that we have, that you have before you. But certainly, I wanted to try to give you some examples of these particular steps that are in place. And so, I'm going to really stop there. But I do want to end with some of Dr. King's quotes because, you know, yesterday was his birthday, and we celebrated him. But also, these particular quotes speak to the work that we are currently doing. If, I know the one to the left is very familiar because it's a mural up at the Dr. Martin Luther King Park. "We cannot walk alone." Well, that is so true to the work that we're doing right now. We can't do this work alone. It's going to take all of us to get this work done. And then, of course, the time is always right to do what is right. And injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. That is so impactful in the work that we're doing. And I'm certain you can see that. So I'm going to stop there and answer any questions that you may have or comments, if you have any initiatives or items that I need to add to my list. I'm here.
Anita, thank you so much for this update. And there was a lot more meat to this content in our agenda packet. So I appreciate you pointing that, pointing our listeners and viewers to that if folks are interested in seeing a fuller kind of accounting of the work you've been doing over the past four years and the work that's on the table now. Continuing, I encourage folks to check out the agenda packet for more information. I know council members will have some questions here about maybe some specific items or projects that we know you're working on, and we can maybe dive in a little bit there. I think I saw Elias R.'s hand first, and then Susan.
Thank you, thank you. I also echo my thanks to you and everyone on staff who's been working on this very important issue, not just for us, but all the members of our community. community. I like seeing Carrboro as a leader in North Carolina specifically, as we're talking about putting people first. So thank you so much for that. I wanted to know more about this podcast. Talk to me more about the podcast. And where is it? Is it on iTunes? Is it on Spotify? How do I get it?
It is Seeing White. That's the name of the podcast. It is on, is it NPR, John? CNN Radio. You know, it was done in 2017, but I got to tell you, it is unbelievable. We talked about white affirmative action. We talked about transformation. One, one section talks about slavery. It talks about, it just, it's just so many things that, that it talks about. And, and so, like I said, every week, we listen to a, you know, a section, and then we, we debrief and talk about it. So it's just been, like I said, I've even learned some things, which I know I don't know at all, but certainly I thought I was a little closer to knowing a lot of the work. So it's been very helpful. And when we can do that, I told John, he did such a wonderful opportunity, helping to, to get that word out and, and just the way that he even explains himself. It's just so impactful to the work that we're doing. I've been trying to find another podcast to see if I can get him to work on that one too. So if you know of one, please let me know.
Will do. Thank you so much. That's where I had.
Thanks, Elias R. Susan, you're next.
Thank you for your presentation, Anita, and welcome to, congratulations on your first day of just one full-time job. It must feel like you're on vacation, even though here it is eight o'clock. But I wanted you to know that I spent part of my Martin Luther King Day of Service at MLK Park yesterday, and I actually went marker to marker with each of the nine quotes. And it's so funny you mention that this evening because as I read the quotes, I was reminded of the conversations our council had. I lose track of time. Was that about a year ago?
It's about 2020. It was about 2020.
When we had those conversations going back and forth on which quotes, but I, you know, the, the quotes about the dismantling capitalism and the less of a military budget and more money into food and housing. And I remember all of those kind of quotes bubbled up after the first round that focused more on the service of, of Martin Luther King. But I just wanted you to know, I really appreciated my time at the park yesterday, and thanks for making this such a great experience for everybody in the community. You mentioned a couple of things that we didn't see on the list. First, I think I mentioned to you on Saturday how long the list of achievements is and how many of those achievements I actually didn't know about, and it was really fun to be reading about them. There were a couple of things that I, and I may very well have missed them. I didn't see them on the list of achievements, but we can, as a council, we can be proud about adopting Juneteenth as a town holiday. And that may have been, was that already there? Sorry about that. And the other one, I may have missed this too, but I know that council approved this marker for Manley McCauley, who was the, the very horrific.
Yes, thank you.
And so I was also, wanted to raise that, but also see if there were any updates. I know that there will be a marker placed, I believe, on the town hall grounds. And I was curious if there were any updates on when that may happen.
Yes, Susan, and thank you for asking. Unfortunately, EJI has had to get a new fabricator for the marker, and they've had a changing of the guards in terms of staff. And so because of that, we have been pretty much in limbo. So they have to negotiate another contract because if you recall, they are paying and creating the marker for us. So Diane Roberson from the OCCRC.
The Orange County Community Remembrance Coalition.
Yeah, okay. She's our, she's our liaison. So I did meet with her and Representative Price right before the holidays. And so we hope that we can move forward sometime early spring. But, you know, the, the space is available. Public Works is on board, you know, ready for it to happen. So we're all just waiting. So hopefully, very soon, and I was going to give her another week, and then I was going to reach out just to see if there's been an update. But we are waiting for that.
Great. Okay, good. Just one more question. And one of the things, I've learned so much from you and others during my three years on council. And one of the things I've learned is, is just like trying to look at more things with the racial equity lens. And I remember Mr. Manager, when we were allocating the ARPA funds, doing this survey of the qualified census tract and being able to hear the voices of people who are typically left out of this input process in terms of the budget. And I think it was really helpful when we made decisions on prioritizing ARPA funds, is having that feedback from the residents in the qualified census tract. And this is all by way of asking, I know we're heading into budget season, and would it be possible to do something like this with the budget coming up in terms of being able to once again do that kind of survey, survey in or in the qualified census tract to get that, to get that feedback?
Yes, that's part of our racial equity work is to make sure that in all that we do, we're trying to reach out to the parts of our community that we don't typically hear from. And so that becomes, as Anita mentioned, help me get it right, which category that, would that be in the operationalized box? No matter what process we do from this point forward, I was going to try to figure out a way to get those who we don't hear from to the table.
Great.
It's part of the Orange County Racial Equity Framework as well, of having an inclusive engagement process.
Great. I appreciate you very much and thrilled to have you in your new full-time role.
Thank you, Susan. Anita, I have one question, an item that I'm, I have been particularly interested, in part because we've discussed it a few times over the past year, and it's something that some of us have talked with some eagerness about with constituents, with members of the community who are interested in this topic of supporting businesses and improving that the way that the town procures from local businesses and so on, and creates more opportunities for, you know, so-called minority-owned and women-owned businesses. We put in the budget, as the manager knows, of course, the funds for a diversity study that would allow us to build a procurement policy that has better outcomes along racial equity lines. Is there any update on RFP going out for that? Or what is, where are we with that?
Yes, it's a disparity study. And John's working with our finance staff to develop that RFP. I believe they're pretty much putting the finishing touches on that RFP. Should be available in the next couple of weeks. By the end of the month, for sure, to be on the street. And so once the proposal's back, we'll review those and then select a firm to get that study underway, hopefully early spring.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. I think that's another really exciting opportunity for us and something I think that will go into that operationalized box. Once we get the findings from this disparity study and are able to use those findings to change our practices.
Exactly right.
Thank you. Okay. Sammy is next.
Thanks, Anita. Congratulations on your new job description. It's pretty exciting. I just was wondering where we are in the cycle. I imagine it's a cycle with the racial equity, the assessment tool. And so staff departments have evaluated it, and then it goes to a core team. But then it also in your, in the packet describes the, that there's a, the Racial Equity Commission reviews the non-operational policies. And so I just wanted to understand, at one point, if any, the council gets a kind of update in terms of like what those recommendations are. So I assume a lot of it's like internal, right? But it would be interesting for us to hear about what you guys find. I'm also interested in us looking into what the other jurisdictions of our county who are part of the GARE network locally have or are doing that we might want to emulate. As there's, you know, you know, there's a diversity here in our county that we might be able to leverage those, those learnings. You know, this is somewhat related, having to do with the Food Policy Council that unfortunately was dismantled by the county right before our winter break. One of the things that was very intentioned by that Food Policy Council was to honor the work of the people we were reaching out with to who actually have, actually have the lived experience. And I find it very unfortunate that right at the moment when this countywide assessment that leveraged those experiences, the county pulled out. And I just want to have an opportunity for us as a council, perhaps during one of these work sessions, to check in about how we'd want to make that work meaningful, given that we haven't pulled out. And there may be an opportunity to continue with the allocation of our funds to leverage and making sure that that work gets completed or action, like there's some action on it. And communicating with neighboring jurisdictions who might still be willing to participate in that, such as Hillsborough. I'm not sure about Chapel Hill. So I just wanted to express, you know, sadness that here we are, countywide, working on these initiatives. And, and I feel like the Food Policy Council was, was leading a way, a way in which to really honor the lived experience of, of many communities, soliciting their input, and many of them reluctantly wanting to participate, knowing how often they are taken in a tokenistic way, and, and how unfortunately, this, this is another one of those experiences that, that is affirming that for, for those communities. So I want us to be able to do our part in really honoring what we were trying to promise to the participants of that work.
Councilmember Slay, but I also want to just kind of update you on the, I guess, partnership with our other jurisdictions. We meet weekly. As a matter of fact, we had a meeting this, this morning. And we, we do work within our communities, but sometimes jurisdictions do other things that we could take advantage of. One being, for instance, I think January 26, Chapel Hill is hosting a results-based training class for nonprofit organizations. You know, we are leading with results-based accountability for our community doing this work. And so the training is available for anyone who wants to participate. We receive that information, and so we automatically push that out, you know, to the nonprofit organizations that we work with and we know about. And so we do that on a, on a regular basis. And we've got a couple of potential projects that we're working on collectively. I would like to just hold off on saying anything until we can get it together because we're trying to put something together, a presentation for all of our elected official groups. So we, we're in close contact, and also we have, someone from the school district has also joined our group. And so we continue to try to, again, build that alliance. So you're absolutely right that we can work together and for the benefit of the community. So we are trying to do that.
And will we have an opportunity as a council to get like a snapshot of exactly kind of like what it, like we hear about these, the assessment tool, but, but it's like the examples to really get a sense of like, what is it that is accomplishing, I think would be very helpful for me.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure, you know, I'm a reflection of others in our community in that regard.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Sammy. Barbara, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Anita. This, this was amazing to see this all in one place. And the way you presented it tonight was, was very helpful to me. Can you share the slide deck?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, especially the slide with the visualize in the middle, normalize, organize, operationalize. So I really liked that. So if you could share that. You need some help. What's, what's going on with the, isn't there an open position in your?
Yes. Yes, I do.
I guess it's still in motion?
Yes, it's in motion. It's been, I think, the announcement went out in December, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
And we've gotten maybe about 15, 20 applicants. And, and so HR is going to help me kind of drill down and create a matrix to try to figure out that next step of advertising. You know, all of these things kind of came up at one time, you know, the training and other things that we were doing. So, okay, you, so I'm trying to juggle the balls, but HR is really going to be helpful in doing that because we know that, you know, they, I think I started receiving applications like mid-December. So, you know, you normally have to begin acting. So acting on those applicants because they may look for employment elsewhere. So we certainly want to get a handle on the cream of the crop. So we, I'm going to be looking at that very shortly. So thank you for thinking about it.
Okay, cool. And I think my next question is for Wesley. I just wanted to know about the Truth Plaque Task Force, and if they were going to be revamped to continue their work. I know you have a lot going on.
They, they will be.
Okay.
We've been in some conversations with a few members.
Okay.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, cool. Well, that's good to know. I have several questions. Y'all just spare with me for a second. So I don't know who this is for, but it's under the Carrboro Racial Equity Accomplishments, number four under the town council. So I'm going back to the disparity study, and thank you, Mr. White, for, for the update. It said it will inform changes to the town's procurement policies to increase opportunities for minority and women-owned business enterprises. So who is the current policy set up for? I mean, it's like, you know, where, I don't know, when I read it, it just, I don't know if it's the way it's worded or what, but it's like you have minority and women over here. You got to create a policy so they can be more involved. But who is the current policy set up for? Is my question. And I'm not trying to be, you know, funny. This is not a smoke and mirrors thing. And it might just be the way that it's worded. I know we want to increase the participation, but I'm just kind of like, I don't know, it just seems like we have to do a lot of, a lot of stuff, you know, to bring folks of color into the, to the picture. And I, I don't know, that just doesn't, it just doesn't sit well with me. And I mean, that's not you, but I'm just saying, the way I'm interpreting number four.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm on page 20.
That's my B, Barbara.
I can try to answer that. I mean, the procurement policy is set up for, for all vendors. It's generic. I think what this does is allows to be intentional. And to intentionally focus on minority-owned businesses, you need a legal basis to do it. You need to demonstrate there is disparity in the way we use our procurement opportunities. And this allows to be intentional to focus on minority and women-owned businesses. And that's based on federal law and state statute. But this will allow us to be intentional in the way that we procure our services and products and construction activities.
You're good. It's your job. I'm gonna leave that alone. I'm gonna leave that alone. But just something about the way that, that it's worded, you know, it's just like, I know you say that it's, it's blanket, but like, we're having to do extra stuff to include people. So I'm going to move on from that. And Mr. White, again, did we ever land on anything about participatory budgeting? I'm a little off now. I got one more question for you, Anita. Did we, I know we had talked about it a little bit, but I don't.
We didn't include that in our budgeting process because we're dealing with ARPA, which is really a whole nother budget, if you will.
Okay.
But there an example of that in the Green Neighborhoods grants that we're going to do in planning. That's kind of a very small version of participatory budgeting that will occur through that process. But we didn't do it for the whole budgeting process because of ARPA in this upcoming budget cycle.
Okay. It seemed like I remembered that. Okay, thank you for that. And I think the last question is, I know, Anita, you talked about how staff is using race equity lenses and analysis, you know, the toolkit, you know, in, in their work currently. So I'm thinking about us, you know, as a council and our policymaking and our decision-making. So I'm, I guess I'm talking to my colleagues. I mean, is, am I clear to assume or, or think that we're adopting this, the same kind of practice that, that staff is, is currently using in their work?
I'd be interested in that.
I think that's a great question, Barbara. And I wonder.
And I wonder, it almost feels like it ties really well into one of the questions that Sammy asked about. Could we, because you're doing all this really good work with the departments to, so that they're using this tool to evaluate their own practices, policies and so on. It would be great, I think, as Sammy said, to see some examples of what they're finding when they use that tool. So that we can understand, oh, okay, this is how they're using it, right? And this is what it's meaning for the work that they're doing and how we might be able to do the same thing when we're making our decisions.
Okay, so the, yeah, but the problem is might. Because if staff is doing it and we're not, we set this up. I mean, we set it up. So it makes no sense for staff to be doing it and the council is not doing it. You know, somewhat hypocritical, you know, to be honest.
Making sure that we're weaving that into our process.
Right. Yeah. So I just wanted to, I don't know if it's a discussion. I don't know if there's concern. But I, I figure we can start as soon as Saturday. So I, I do want to just put that on the table, you know, for discussion and also for clarity to see how everybody else feels about that. But for me, it needs to balance off with what staff is doing. We set this up. We, we voted on all this stuff.
Do you have any thoughts about that, Anita?
Yeah, and the, um, and the lens that we're using is part of the one orange racial equity, um, framework. So, um, that, that's the lens that we're using. And certainly I think it's been very helpful for us. You know, we can get you some examples. I guess we have maybe about twelve, maybe twelve, um, racial equity analysis that have been done, um, that, that can be used now. And, and we say, we, we put in front of the lens, um, I guess some, um, FAQs to try to help you figure out some things. And, and one of the questions is who should use this tool? And we say elected officials can use the tool, staff can use the tool. You know, so it, it was hopefully designed in a way, um, that everyone can use the tool that, that has to make decisions or, or needs to evaluate, uh, some of the work that they're, they're doing right now. It has been probably about a year. So that's one of the things, um, that we need to do. I, um, led that subcommittee in putting together that racial equity lens. And so it's almost time for us to reconvene to say, okay, we've, we've had a year of using it. You know, what can we do differently? You know, should we, should we take a look at? Um, I think it's around seven pages, um, long in terms of, um, of questions. But a lot of those pages also, um, includes information to help you, to help prompt you answering the question. Because you may say, oh, that doesn't affect what I'm doing. But then we'll say, but have you considered this or have you? So it's an opportunity. So it's not as extensive as you think. But it, you, you have to complete some type of community engagement or you may already have information in place. You have to, um, consider, um, a desired result. You know, everything that we do should have some kind of desired result. So it's the step-by-step of, um, how you are evaluating something new or something that's existing.
And so, and so I'm still on that question with my colleagues. Are we, are we needing to think about it or what?
I think it would be interesting to me, Anita, if, um, ask you check in with your counterparts on this committee that was using the lens over the past year and seeing how it works out and what the results of it are. If we could, if maybe one of the conversations you have with them is how are they thinking about using this with their elected boards? Is there a way that, some ideas you might have about how we weave that into our own processes as a council, as Barbara seems to be suggesting?
Well, I can say, um, that, and I can double check, um, but the last I checked, we are leading the way in using the lens. Because, um, the, um, direction that came, that went to the council is that we would involve this in evaluating our, our policies, practices and procedures. And so that means pretty much everything that we do.
Our practices.
Yes. Well, and so that's what, that's what Carrboro is doing. Um, I think Chapel Hill has used it two or three times, maybe in budgeting, maybe, um, in, um, working with policing and, um, you know, so it's not everything. We, um, we're the leaders that said, you know, we, we're going to try to evaluate pretty much everything. Because it was this understanding that, I mean, just think about it. We've got all of these systems in place, these policies, these practices in place. And so if we're evaluating some and not evaluating others, then we may have, you know, good, strong policies after a review to policies that have been in place and may have some unintentional consequences attached. So I think that was the premise as to why there was this recommendation to evaluate pretty much from a, a broader perspective, everything that we do, because it certainly would help. So I, I can check with them. I mean, I can send them something right away, but I don't think that's really happening because I'm not entirely sure if, you know, they are, um, they're not using it in quite the way that we're using it.
Thank you, Anita. Mr. Manager, you had your hand up?
Just want to add, one way that we hope that we can begin to tie, make the tie to council is that on the agenda abstract from staff, we plan to include a section on there where, that will have a space where the agenda item come to council reflect how does it impact several areas like race and equity, climate, and a few other policy areas. We want to begin to put that on your agenda abstract as well. So you can begin to make that tie in to your policies on the agenda report.
It's always there. It's always part of every conversation.
Yes.
All right, okay, perfect. I look forward to hearing more about that when you have your next meeting, Anita. Thank you.
Sure.
Barbara, you still have the floor?
I'm a little, I'm, I'm concerned. I, I can't begin to understand why we would not want to use this racial equity lens and/or analysis and why we're hesitant and why I'm not getting any buy-in. I can't begin to understand that. It's, um, it's disappointing. You know, because if staff is working the way they're working and using it, I, I can't begin to understand why we would not want to use it too. I, I, I guess I'm looking for like, what is the hesitancy? What, what are we, what are we waiting for? I think, um, you know, Anita talked about, you know, some of the questions. And so I, I just, I don't understand. I really don't.
I can say, I don't feel hesitation about it. I, I'm interested in us using it. But I wonder what that looks like. You know, I'd like to see the tool, how, learn how the departments have been using it and, um, so that we can figure out how it makes sense for us to use it.
We can get you the tool.
Thank you. Um, Danny?
Yeah, I think Barbara raises a really good point. And I think we have had several conversations among the board going into this retreat. I think as staff has really, what, what is so heartening to hear in Anita's work is it's almost, um, kind of has raised the sort of vocabulary and the, and the floor for the way our staff is thinking about this issue. So I think now we're in a place where we can trust that our staff is really conversant and, um, ready to kind of act on this work. And so I do think it's on us. I, I think we're all sort of aware of this, but I think this is really a perfect and exciting primer for Saturday. I think now that, as we have this agenda format that's going to start to track race equity and climate action impacts for every single item, I think what we need to do as a council here is to really be concrete in our commitment to one another about, um, the ways, you know, that we see, we see this tracking. I think, you know, I was, I was having conversations today about turning these action items into like a budgetary process. You know, like how do we, how do we take this framework and put it on paper in the budget? Um, and this is, as we've been talking about both climate action and racial equity as these pillars in the comprehensive plan, I think we've all kind of felt a, a sort of sense of frustration that we have these massive webs that we're kind of constantly hacking through. And now it's really exciting that we have this chance to sort of have a common vocabulary and to be on the same page. And so I think we do adopt this framework, right, or, you know, we, we, we feel, I, speaking for myself, feel really passionate about the opportunity to apply this framework. But that, I think, would really serve us all to think like concretely coming into Saturday. How do, how do you personally, my colleagues, conceptualize the ways in which we can track this? Like when we go, when we, when we open the budget, which, you know, will, will be soon in the cycle, what information do you need on which pages, you know, to sort of hold those dollars accountable to this lens? I think is a really useful way to think about this. Um, and I think now that we know that our departments are conversant and we'll be able to sort of answer our questions and keep pace with that kind of thinking, it really isn't coming on us to sort of decide now how we want to sort of organize the levers that we can pull to make sure that we're constantly operationalizing. Um, so I, I mean, I take, I take the point very well, Barbara. I think, I mean, I really appreciate the, the spur to, to add more urgency and more concrete. And I, you know, I hope, I, I think we all feel a real sense of opportunity about the ability to do that this weekend.
Let's see, Sammy and then Elias R.
Yeah, and I, I hear you, Barbara. I, you know, I'm all for, um, experimenting with it. I have no idea what it is, except for what you've said, prompting questions. Um, so if there are items during our retreat that lend themselves for those questions to be asked, I'd be interested in experimenting during the retreat. And, you know, and going forward too. I just, um, haven't gotten a real sense as to what, what that is, what degree of training it requires, you know, like. But I'm all for building the plane as we fly because I do agree on other issues and this issue that sometimes we, uh, you know, analysis paralysis or like we just like, uh, you know, studied things too much or, but, but there's really an opportunity to be courageous and just do, you know, and learn as we do.
I wonder, and I'll come to you next, Elias R. I wonder, Anita, if, um, on this point of us getting a hold of the tool and starting to use it, when you started working with your department heads, um, to use it in their own departments and actually analyzing, evaluating their processes, did you, did they go through, did you work with them to understand how to use it? You teach them how to use the tool?
It was an orientation of the tool. Yes, we did a, um, town-wide orientation. And then, um, you know, each, there's a core team member, um, for each department. So of course, um, you know, we worked with them as well. And so they're also there as a, um, sounding board, so to speak, and helping to evaluate the process. You know, it's, it's pretty much like anything else. You really have to, to, uh, work through it to, to try to determine how, uh, to move forward. But we did orientate them in terms of the expectation of what's necessary, you know, to answer the question.
Cool. And so in, in the spirit of, uh, what Barbara was suggesting about, well, we've got the staff trained up and using it, why aren't we using it? I wonder if, we all went through, you, and you hosted along with your colleagues in Chapel Hill and Orange County, these trainings for council members recently, over the last really several weeks or so.
Yes.
Um, they were Zoom-based and everything. It was really great to get into that material again. What if we maybe think about some follow-up trainings that are specifically about the use of this tool? So that, for council members, right? Our staff's been through the trainings. They're starting to already use it. You say they've been, some of them have been using it for a year and have already developed a dozen, um, analyses of their practices. Maybe we, maybe we need to go through that orientation now that we've all been through the training that you offered. Maybe now our next step is to go through the orientation as council members, where the, specifically for the tool itself. Does that make?
And, and answer any questions, you know. It, some of it's intuitive. I, I just think it's, you know, based on, um, you know, it's based on a lot of factors. Um, so, but it's this opportunity to go through each particular question and just, um, try to figure out, you know, what that looks like and why, and how you need to answer it.
And maybe we could also have you send that to us in the meantime, just so we can be looking at it and thinking about what it might mean for us over the weekend and that kind of thing. All right, next I have Elias R. and then we'll go to Barbara.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So yes, actually, most of my questions that I've had since Councilmember Fushi was speaking have already been answered. Yes, if you could please send that over, that'd be great. I was actually also going to ask, along the lines of the mayor, is there a recording already done or, um, that you have done with staff or something else that kind of like speaks a little bit more about this? Okay.
We don't, no, we don't have a, a recording. Like I said, but what we did try to do is the RFQs in the front and then the information at each section for you to say, okay, this is what you need, this is what you need to do and here are the things you need to consider. And, and every, and, and realizing that every question is not necessarily going to be answered because it may not apply. But, but actually really taking a hard look to see if it does apply or not.
No, and, and I appreciate that because I definitely want to see this. And I know that all of us are on our own journey to understanding racial equity and what our role in, uh, in, and as council members and members of the community that is. So I want to respect folks, uh, who, who, um, are going through this journey. But also I am on board, uh, with Councilmember Fushi that this is an urgency, that that's something that needs to be put into every conversation we have. Fully knowing that I myself have a lot to learn, um, to, to fully understand racial equity. So I want to, um, just, once again, thank you for, for your work in creating this tool and putting, uh, staff, uh, and, and making sure that staff are, uh, up to, uh, know this and are, are, are able to, um, put it into work. Um, I really want to see it. Um, and, and I encourage all of us, um, if you could please send it to the entire council, like I encourage all of us to take some time between now and the, um, retreat to maybe if it's not the tool that you feel comfortable with, still like, you know, kind of taking some time to, to, um, see where you are in your own commitment as Councilmember Noel said, uh, as we walk into Saturday. But that's, I'll pause there.
Okay, Barbara, did you have another question, comment?
And so I appreciated what you said, Anita, about being intuitive. Because the fact of the matter is, is we've had, all of us have had training. We've had some, some REI training. We've had training with the town. And, and, you know, at, at some point, the rubber meets the road and you're expected to use what you've learned in the training. And I know that everybody doesn't come up to speed as quickly as others. I have a short fuse about it. I have lived experience. And so this is the space that I'm coming from tonight. And so that's why I'm, I'm pushing and just trying to encourage, um, you know, my colleagues, please come along with me on this. It could not be more important, um, than it is today. And so, um, you know, a lot of it is on our own. I mean, Anita may give the questions, you know, but then it becomes like, what did you learn in the training? How do you apply it in your everyday life? How do you apply it in the policymaking and the decisions that we make in here for the whole community?
You know, I was thinking as you all were talking about this. And if I'm not mistaken, John, have you been in the DRE training? Okay, John, and I think Wesley, you've been in the DRE training. Okay. Everyone has not completed that DRE training, but it's for daily decisions. There is a tool involved, um, you know, that they're training on this month. There's a tool involved and it helps in daily decision-making. So it, it probably has a little more credence in terms of maybe some of the decisions that you all might need to make. It, it does capture a lot of the same information. But it also provides an opportunity for choice points. How do you, how do you move forward? So, um, you know, I, I can send the tool. I can see the, send the tool that we're currently using. And after we wrap up our training the end of the month, it may be a good idea for me to send that tool as well. I don't think that one certainly wouldn't take as long, but it still gets to the heart of how to make decisions and why, which is important. And I think that's why it's, um, and so I, uh, really thought that would be a good opportunity because, like I said, the tool that we're currently using is very extensive and it's evaluating a policy or, but that is just for daily, um, decisions that you have to make. So it may be, um, just slightly different, but you're still kind of gathering the same. It's causing you to think deliberately about what you're doing and who is getting a benefit, who is being burdened, who is left out unintentionally and so on and so forth. So you still gather that same kind of information, but maybe not to the same magnitude. So just wanted to, to mention that, that may be helpful.
Very helpful too. Thanks for including that, that next piece. All right, um, so before we accept, officially accept your report, Anita, I just wanted to try to summarize. I've been taking notes as council members asked questions and offered their perspectives and recommendations. Just kind of summarize what we've heard tonight and shared with Anita. We started out with wanting to be referred. We started out with wanting to be referred to this podcast. Y'all have been listening to, Elias R. asked if we could, maybe you could send us some information about the podcast.
I will.
Just, uh, making sure we're keeping up to date, as it sounds like you are, on the mainly McCauley marker that will be on Town Hall property. And Susan also mentioned that, as well as wondering about how, um, feedback from residents in our qualified centrist tract will be incorporated into upcoming budgetary and other decisions as it was during the ARPA discussions. I asked about just kind of the status of the disparity study for shaping our procurement policy. Sammy asked about, um, what are the departments finding as they use this tool? And it sounds like they've completed several analyses. So it'd be interesting just to, as Sammy said, see some snapshots of that.
Sure.
Um, and also some conversation about what our other local governments are doing that we might emulate or participate in. And it sounds like you're meeting pretty frequently about that. And then Sammy also raised this question about how we can help the, the now former food council, um, at least to wrap up the work that they were doing and engaging with folks in the community on the food council stuff. Barbara asked that you share your slides with us. I think that would be very helpful. Thank you. Um, and also asked about, um, the status of recruitment for the racial, race and equity manager position. It sounds like that's moving along. As well as the meeting, resuming meetings of the truth plaque task force. Being, getting some more clarity about, you know, why are we doing this procurement policy disparity study thing? Like what's the ultimate goal there? What is our intention, as the manager said? Are there opportunities for participatory budgeting? I think Barbara asked about, um, that as well. And it sounds like we're doing some of that a little bit in the Green Neighborhoods program. And then, of course, this opportunity for us to start walking the walk like our staff have been doing when it comes to using these tools. So if you would finally send us the racial equity assessment lens that you've been using, and then it sounds like you're also willing to share with us, so you call the DRE, is that another, the daily tool? Once y'all are finished training up on it.
Yes, daily racial equity decisions.
Eventually you might share that with us, but at least share the racial equity assessment lens with us before, before we get into our retreat.
That's correct.
And, and then finally considering, um, an orientation for council members on the use of that tool so that we can do our part along with staff to use it.
Yes.
That was the list I had from council members today. Yes, Barbara?
You're writing too.
We're getting ready to go. So, um, I, I had a question about our retreat on Saturday. Has any information been shared from Anita? Am I asking Mr. White now? Any information been shared from Anita's, uh, department to maybe help the facilitators along? Like maybe these questions or, or something else that you know of?
After tonight, I'm going to share all this with the facilitators in the morning.
Oh, okay.
Because you're all looking for the lens, the tool for Saturday.
Got it.
So we'll talk tomorrow based on the conversation tonight.
Okay.
About what more we can do to be prepared for Saturday.
Okay, that's cool. Right on.
Thanks for that, Barbara. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Anita's report.
I'm moved.
It's moved by Elias R., seconded by Sammy, that we accept the report tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter passes unanimously. Anita, thank you so much. Congratulations on all the accomplishments. Condolences on the work ahead. No, but it is an exciting opportunity to keep doing the hard work and I appreciate that you are leading the way for us with our colleagues.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, before we go, y'all, I, um, just wanted to, uh, didn't warn the manager I was going to do this, but I just want to put it on people's radar. There's a possibility that we'll, that I will need to call a special meeting to address just a procedural matter on a grant, um, application, submittal, that staff has been waiting from some of our partners for some information to finalize the materials that have to be submitted by the end of January. We don't have a meeting on our schedule before the end of January, but it, we have to meet that deadline, but we're still waiting on our partners to send us the information that they have to send us to get it done. So my thinking is, and I'll have to check in with the manager about the status of this, we all, it's a very straightforward, like we just need to get the grant submitted. We only need a quorum to make that happen. So if everybody can't make it to a special meeting, that's fine. I just need four of us to be able to make it and vote for it. So I'll have more informa, I just want to put that on your radar as a possibility that we will have some, we may need to have some kind of special meeting, um, to move that grant, um, submittal forward.
Would that be on a Tuesday or it could be?
Well, I would prefer for us to do, do it on our regular date that we normally would, but it'll depend on when we can get a quorum here.
It may be online.
It cannot. Because we'd be having to take a vote. We're not able to do that. But again, if, I understand that people have other commitments and if there are just four of us who can come here for 10 minutes and move it along, that's perfectly adequate as well. Just wanted to give you a heads up that that'd be coming. So more information soon. All right. Any other matters before we adjourn?
Move we adjourn?
I'll second that one.
Moved by Danny, seconded by Elias R. that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously, we adjourned.